The April 17th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting is called to order. This to advise that the notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was promptly posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on April 4th, 2024, transmitted to the Times, Princeton Pack, and the West Windsor Plainsboro News on April 4th, 2024, and filed with the township clerk on April 4th, 2024. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Lovero. Mr. Schuchtel. Mr. Panko.
Yes.
Mr. Beg.
Yes.
Ms. Bari. Ms. Applegate. Councilman Whitfield.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Here.
And Chairman Carr.
Here. We have a call. Okay, um, there's, I guess, Environmental Commission Affordable Housing are gonna be NA for tonight. Um, nothing to report on environmental and George is not here. Um, let's look at the minutes for December 13th. Are there any amendments, corrections, changes that need to be done to those minutes?
Uh, yes, I have one. Um, at Public Comments, uh, resident Stacy Fox, uh, mentioned that that her, that she recently had to go before the, it says Planning Board for a 150-foot square foot addition. It was actually a zoning board application, not a planning board application.
Okay.
You follow me? Where am I at, Cindy? Bottom of the page on, uh, December 13th.
13th.
That bottom right. Thank you.
Any other amendments, changes, so on and so forth, December 13 minutes? I entertain a motion to accept the, approve the December 13 minutes as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Simon, second.
Second.
Second by the mayor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Who, any abstention?
Abstain.
Abstain from, who's abstaining?
Councilman Whitfield.
Whitfield and Mr. Bay. Okay, thank you. Um, minutes for March 6th, 2024. Are there any changes, amendments, um, that need to be done there? Anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 6 minutes.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Curtis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um.
Abstain.
Okay, Simon's abstaining. Right, Annis is abstaining. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, um, is Resolution PB 22-02. Um, Martine.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
I'm sorry, say.
Do you want to make a comment about why you're not, uh, doing Public Comments, number four of your agenda?
Thank, thank, thank you so much. Appreciate that. My apologies. I usually will go to Public Comments on non-agenda, non-pending items. Thank, thank you for pointing that out. I skipped right over it. Uh, anybody from the public wish to speak on a non-agenda, non-pending item? Please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Listen?
Yes.
Thanks. Andrea Mandell, 46 Ellsworth Drive, West Windsor. Um, I just wanted to note that Dan Double Millsky has been before this board a number of times. I know him as a member of the Planning Board, as a member of, of, uh, West Windsor Township Council, and also as a Girl Scout volunteer who's worked over many years with, uh, with girls on many projects with him. Um, and I, you know, we're, we're going to miss him. Uh, he's doing a very good, uh, you know, he's done a wonderful job, uh, for the town. We all appreciate him. At the Environmental Commission, there was a, um, resolution that was put together, a proclamation for him. Uh, there are some others planned. I know the council's planning one also. And I, one main reason why I'm talking to the board is that, uh, I want to let everybody know that at, on Arbor Day, which is going to be on Saturday at 10:00 AM, uh, Dan will be there. Um, and I believe Shade Tree Commission's going to have a big card people can sign for him also. And we will, uh, be presenting the proclamations. So, um, I'm inviting everybody from the board to please come to Arbor Day if they would like to have one last chance to thank Dan for everything. Thanks. Bye.
Thanks.
Sam, how many years of service has Dan put in for West Windsor Township?
He, uh, he worked as a consultant since 1986, was hired by the town in 1998.
Thank you. Nice.
Wow, long time. Thank you for your, thank you for your service, Dan. Um, anybody else from the public wish to step up and, uh, speak? Please step up. Okay, everybody's here on an agenda item. Nice. Um, okay, so I'll just go back to, there's no Environmental Commission Affordable Housing. Um, we already did the minutes. Resolution PB 22-02. Martine.
Yep. Is on. Red one. Hello? Yep. This application is being postponed. Um, the applicant requested more time to review the draft resolution. So, um, it hopefully will be on for the next Planning Board meeting to be adopted, but, um, that's to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The main event, the main event, the Draft Baryon City Planning and Zoning Study Presentation. Okay, David, you're up.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, should I get sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give, uh, will be the truth?
I do.
And just for everyone's benefit, please, um, introduce yourself.
Of course. Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Novak. I'm a planner with Burgess Associates. Been with Burgess now for about 13 years and think been working with West Windsor now for about six years or so. Um, just as a point of order, as I talk tonight, inevitably, this microphone is going to drift away from my mouth. So at some point, you can't hear me, just wave and I'll bring it right back up. Um, so tonight, we will be discussing, uh, the Baryon City Planning and Zoning Study. So this is an initial analysis right now of the existing zoning and development pattern of the community. So this is more of a fact-finding mission at this point, uh, looking at what the existing development pattern is like, what the existing zoning is like, and where there might be mismatches between the two. In terms of recommendations, in terms of solutions, as of right now, we're not offering anything in this report because we really wanted to present you guys with what we're seeing as some of the potential problems, and then workshopping that to see what solutions we can get. So. Tonight, we'll be breaking this discussion down into four topics. A little bit of background information on what a master plan is, and then a brief overview of Baryon City, a discussion of the existing zoning of the area, and then an analysis of how does that existing development pattern match with the existing zoning? So first, though, it's important to discuss what a master plan is and, and how that impacts how we live in a community. So a master plan is a comprehensive, long-term strategic document, which is intended to guide the growth and development of a community. So think of a master plan as, uh, a roadmap. It maps out where you currently are and where you wish to be in the future. And what a master plan does is that it sets the parameters around which development should occur. So a master plan comes up with the ideas, and then that should set the stage for future zoning. In most municipalities, including West Windsor, you have three roles in the planning world. On the bottom left there, we have the Planning Board, this board here, which adopts master plan documents. Those master plan documents, like I said, should set the general parameters around which development occur. Those parameters become zoning regulations, which are adopted by the mayor and council. And then on the bottom right there, you have the zoning board. So if somebody wants to, uh, say, build something that's not permitted in a certain use, uh, in a district, or it's a residential house and they want to build a fence that's too tall, the zoning board would have the opportunity to grant certain variances. So those are the three roles in planning, very, very, very simplified. But right now, we're talking about that bottom left quadrant or corner with the Planning Board working with a master plan. And the reason why we're even doing this study is because it's been a long-term master plan goal of this community dating back to about 2002, to look at the Baryon City area, as well as some other neighborhoods, and recognizing that there's certain conflicts between the existing development pattern and how we zone for that, and then coming up with solutions. So that, from my research, was first discussed in your 2002 master plan, and it's been reiterated, uh, in several planning documents ever since. So next, we'll discuss a, uh, brief overview of Baryon City. So historically, Baryon City was three separate neighborhoods. Uh, in 1916, it began as Baryon Heights. In 1924, it was Baryon City. And then 1926, it was Princeton Gardens. And this app, our society, uh, which is a fantastic website, um, provided this map. You can see Baryon Heights in blue, Baryon City in a gold color, we'll call it, and then Princeton Gardens in that green color. Now, you'll see Princeton Gardens extending past the rail line, past that circle onto Alexander Road. That was initially planned, but it was never developed. In regard to the development history of Baryon City, it was the first planned community in West Windsor wherein you, as a property owner, had the opportunity to buy one lot, two lots, three lots. You can combine those lots together, and then you can decide on what type of dwelling you wanted to be constructed on that. So as we go through this presentation, as you see some of the maps, and as you drive through your own community, you can see that lot sizes will change and architectural styles will change as well. When we look at West, I'm sorry, when we look at Baryon City in general in West Windsor, it's located in a northerly portion of your township. To the northwest, it's bounded by Wallace Road. To the northeast, we have Acme Woods. To the east, we have Nash Park. To the south, we have Maurice Hawk School. And then to the west, Benford Drive. And then here we have an aerial of the study area, which we included for Baryon City. These two charts provide a basic overview of the development pattern there. So when we look at just the number of lots and/or the total lot area, we can see that Baryon City is overwhelmingly a residential community. So 93.5% of all lots within Baryon City are residential. 3.6 are non-residential, and only 2.9% are vacant. When we look at those lots in terms of lot area, how big they are, slightly more than three-quarters of the community, 78.9%, are all residential. Uh, you have 20% that is non-residential and just over 1% which is vacant. So again, predominantly a residential community. The average residential lot size in Baryon City is 12,963 square feet, which is just a little bit over a quarter of an acre. But the interesting thing is, if you look at this bar chart here, this is what a statistician would. You have larger lot sizes that are dragging up that average size. So you see the largest bar there, 56 properties have a lot size between 5,001, 9,999 square feet. We also broke down average lot sizes based on per street because, again, when you drive down one street or another street in Baryon City, you might see different development patterns. So typically, Lily Street and Montgomery Street, which I grouped together in that south portion of Baryon City, typically had the largest lot sizes, around 18,571 square feet. Alexander Road, which goes in that east-west direction, has the smallest average lot size of 10,922, 3, 923 square feet. And we did the same type of analysis for residential dwelling sizes. And again, you can see the same type of pattern happening. The average residential dwelling size is roughly 1,512 square feet. But 58 properties, that largest bar, have dwelling sizes somewhere between 1,000 to 1,499 square feet. And if we look at average dwelling sizes per street, we don't see too much of a fluctuation, but Alexander Road, ironically, has some of the largest average lot sizes, I'm sorry, dwelling sizes, even though they have the smallest lot sizes, whereas Baryon Ave., uh, and Wallace Road have very similar, smaller average dwelling sizes. And then we have another of non-residential and vacant lots. So going from west to east or left to right, uh, these are largely concentrated on Alexander Road. So we have a mixed-use building that has a shoe repair store in the front. Next to that, we have Brothers Pizzeria, and then we have the Art Center right next to that. And then the largest non-residential properties there, uh, which are the Crawford Woods, which are preserved. So Crawford Woods is preserved. Nothing will be happening with Crawford Woods with this developer, with the study, because it is preserved. So that's the existing development pattern of the area. Let's look at the existing zoning in comparison. So this zoning map identifies that the majority of Baryon City is located in that R1A district. We did include one property along Harris Road that is located in the R20 district. We included that property because the dwelling was constructed roughly at the same time as those other properties along Harris Road. So we just decided to group that in together. But the majority of residential dwellings, uh, in fact, the majority of all lots in Baryon City are located in that R1A district. The R1A district and the R20 district essentially permit the same uses, right? It's a predominantly single-family dwelling zoning district, but it will also allow for home occupations, parks, farms, uh, the sale and processing of agricultural products, which is permitted in all of your zoning districts, uh, temporary construction buildings, accessory uses, community residences, buildings owned and operated by West Windsor. The only difference between the permitted uses is that the R1A district allows for veterinary clinics that were in existence as of January 1st, 2000. Unless I was severely missing something, I did not see any vet clinic in Baryon City. So essentially, that is not a applicable use for this, for this community. Both the R1A and the R20 district also establish a number of conditional uses. So a conditional use is a use that's from, kind of, strict, provided it meets conditions. If you meet condition 1, 2, 3, and 4, it's considered to be a permitted use, and you go in front of the Planning Board. If you're not meeting one of those conditions, it requires a conditional use variance, and then it goes in front of the zoning board of adjustment. So again, both the R1A and the R20 district largely allow for the same types of conditional uses. The only differences are the R1A district allows for nursing homes, rest homes, and homes for the aged, as well as an open space cluster. Now, what's an open space cluster development? An open space cluster development is a type of permitted zoning, uh, regulation where if you have a larger lot, and you would typically be allowed one-acre lots on there, the cluster option would allow you to have smaller lot sizes with the remaining space being open space. So you might be wondering, why is that even a permitted conditional use here? We have no larger lot sizes in Baryon City. Well. It's a great question you'd be asking, and I want you to look at the bulk standards. You don't need to memorize these, obviously, and, and this presentation is up on the website as well. But what I want to keep in mind is that minimum lot area requirement for the R1A district, 72,600 square feet. In order to have a conforming lot in most of Baryon City, you need to have a lot area of around 72,600 square feet. Just. Stop. Do we want to guess how many lots in Baryon City have a lot size of two acres? It's going to be very little. So. That sets the stage for this initial zoning analysis. So when we look at the totality of Baryon City, the good news is, most of your uses in Baryon City are actually compliant. Only 3% of uses are not compliant. However, in terms of residential lots, 100% of your residential lots in Baryon City do not meet the minimum lot size requirement. Why is that important? If we go back to this bulk standard, all these other regulations that are established, the minimum lot frontage, a lot width, lot depth, a minimum front yard requirement of 40 feet, a rear yard, side yard, that floor area ratio, the improvement coverage, all those bulk standards are based on the assumption that you are going to have a conforming lot. So if you have a set lot, having a front yard requirement of 40 feet, and two side yards of 20 feet, and a rear yard of 20 feet, that would likely leave you with a larger building envelope, where you can put that dwelling and your garage, uh, your pool, and not have to require any type of variance relief. When we shrink that lot size down in Baryon City, those yard requirements stay the same. So if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, you are still operating under the assumption that you can only have a front yard of 40 feet, rear yard of 20 feet, and side yards of 20 feet. What that does is that it shrinks down your building envelope, and all of a sudden, your house either has to be 10 feet wide, or you have to go in front of the zoning board of adjustment for a bulk variance. The same thing goes with floor area ratio. A floor area ratio is essentially a control over how large and intense a dwelling can be. So the way you calculate a floor area ratio is you take up all the areas of your floors, excluding certain, uh, garages or mechanical spaces, but you're taking your living spaces essentially, adding that together, and dividing it by your total lot area. So if you were on a minimum lot size that was compliant of 72,600 square feet, and I'm taking out my calculator because I cannot do math, you would be allowed a floor area of your house of 12,342 square feet, which is a very large house. If you take a 10,000-square-foot lot, and you multiply that by 0.17, now you're looking at a house size of around 1,700 square feet. The smaller lot size you get, the smaller of a permitted dwelling you're allowed to have. And again, any type of variance that you require would have to go in front of the zoning board of adjustment. Now, you might be asking, why is that a big deal? Uh, essentially, when you go in front of the zoning board of adjustment, you have to file an application, you have to pay certain fees, you have to pay certain escrow. So it becomes a bit of a costlier and longer process to build that addition along the back of your house, or to construct that garage. So when we look at that R1A residential analysis, 100% of your properties residential don't meet the lot size requirement. Same thing goes for lot width. You have 97.6%. Almost none of the lot residential lots in Baryon City meet that lot width requirement. You can see other non-conform. Little front yard setback. Typically, your front yard setbacks in Baryon City are a little bit, uh, smaller than what's required by the R1A district. Houses back then were built closer to the street. Um, in terms of floor area ratio, how large houses can be, we estimated that slightly over half of the properties there are over that limitation. So you can see, because this R1A district imagines and envisions a larger lot size, but it's imposed on an area where you have smaller lot sizes, non-conforming conditions increase. When we look at some of the non-residential properties, these are predominantly located along Alexander Road, we have less of non-conforming conditions, but 40% of those properties are still not conforming. That would really be the pizzeria and the mixed-use building with the shoe shop right next door. And then we do have other pieces of vacant land. So I did not consider the Crawford Woods to be vacant land, even though it is vacant, but smaller, what we would call vacant building lots. 100% of those are obviously not compliant with minimum lot size. Uh, 100% are not, uh, uh, compliant with lot width and lot depth. So those vacant lots are also undersized. So I do have a series of maps that do identify, uh, where there are non-conformities and where there are conforming conditions. So we look at uses, we can see that the majority of Baryon City is conforming. The uses there are permitted. As we scroll through, we see the exact opposite with lot size. The majority of lots are not conforming. So these two are fairly basic, right? We see a lot of conforming lots, a lot of not conforming lots. And then we start breaking it down to some of the other bulk requirements. We can see things get a little bit more complicated. So in terms of conforming lot frontage, it's about a split, but you can see some streets are a little bit more conforming than others. Lot width, generally speaking, Baryon City's not conforming with the minimum lot width requirement. Lot depth, most lots surprisingly were conforming with lot depth. And then front yard, we can see there's some discrepancies based on streets, but predominantly still not conforming. Rear yard, surprisingly, almost every lot was conforming, which I guess isn't surprising since houses back then were constructed closer to the street. Side yard, it changes based on where you are. Floor area ratio, similar. Improvement coverage, similar. So that was all good information to have, but when I was looking at those maps, I realized that looking at Baryon City as a whole, it paints you a good picture, but there seem to be a lot of discrepancies when you go street by street. So what we did here is that we broke out Baryon City into what I call the sub-neighborhoods. And it's not based on any exact science, admittedly, but what I did try to look at were corridors. So we looked at Baryon Avenue. We looked at Scott Avenue South, which would be south of Alexander, and then Alexander. Lily Street and Montgomery Street, which we kind of combined together as that southern corner or that southern portion of the study area. The Alexander Road corridor going west to east, Harris Road, which would be that eastern extent, and then Wallace Road, which is the northwesterly portion that kind of faces its own way. And we did that similar type of analysis for each of those corridors. So we won't go through everything here, but we can see the levels of conformity and non-conformity for each street. And each one, as we go through, you can see, has their own unique levels of conformity and non-conformity. So. This is the easy part, right? We can, I look at the existing development pattern, I can look at the existing zoning, see where things match up, see where things don't match up. I can do that all day. And while it sounds like I'm being negative, pointing out all the problems, because that's what a zoning analysis typically is, I recognize that Baryon City is a very important place. It's a special area of the township. So when I point out these problems, that's not saying, hey, Baryon City is to fit this way and that way. It's, it certainly has these discrepancies with zoning. The important thing is identifying what those discrepancies are, and then coming up with ideas for how we can potentially address it. And the point of this presentation tonight is to let you know, this is what we're seeing from, uh, what the potential problems are. And the next couple steps in this process is identifying how we can potentially address those problems with different solutions. And these are different discussion points. We can talk about some of these, we can not talk about some of these, but the point is to solicit feedback from you for things that I might be missing from a planning and zoning perspective. I can look at a map, but you guys live there, uh, as well as come up with ideas for what you think are some potential solutions, or what we should be investigating, what we should be talking about, what we should be paying attention to, and what we might be missing. And that's essentially it for this presentation. This was more of an introductory, letting you guys know who I am, what we're looking at, and then beginning the conversation to solicit feedback and understanding from you who live in the community. So that's all I have for now, but I'm willing to take questions from the board, from the public, wherever, which way you'd like to go.
Um. Before I turn it over to the public, anybody from the board who want to have a question?
Yeah, Steve, I have a familiarity question. Could you bring back up the conforming use image, please? Conforming use. Okay, uh, two properties, uh, that are non-conforming. I just can't figure out what they are. One is the residential prop, it looks like a residential property. It's above the D in Alexander Road, the red, little red portion between, uh, Scott Avenue and the Acme Woods.
I believe that property was approved to have an accessory apartment in the garage. Sam, does that sound familiar? Yes, that one has an accessory apartment and a garage. So we consider that being non-conforming.
That came before zoning, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then the other property would be the, uh, property near Lily Street and Baryon Avenue, which is also red.
Bottom left, right?
Bottom left, yeah.
Uh, according to the, uh, real estate listing for that, and I double-checked with Sam, I believe the tax assistant was able to confirm, the real estate listing identified that it had about four units in there.
Four units, okay.
Yes. Um, so a, as a backtrack too, just to explain to everybody where we got this data, um, the landscape of New Jersey planning and zoning has been changing, and this gets into a little bit of a nerdy discussion, I apologize. But a lot of the estimates that we make in terms of setbacks are based on this GIS information, geographic information science, it's mapping programs. That information is going to be mostly accurate, but it's certainly not survey accurate. So if you look up the individual information for your lot, you might So if you look up the individual information for your lot, you might say, hey, you estimated a front yard setback of fifteen feet, it's actually twenty feet. That's bound to happen. The more complicated factor is something called Daniel's Law. So Daniel's Law was released a couple of years ago, which restricts public access to certain aspects of online tax information. It was originally geared to protect people in public positions, judges, police officers. Counties though have been rolling back the availability of certain online tax data. So before, every county used to have their tax information online, so I can see largely the house was. That's largely going away. So I did have some older information based on old zoning board applications were received. But a lot of this I've had to check back on older resources I had and compare with online uh real estate records, which pulled from that and is still there. So um, that was a long-winded way of me saying, that's where we got that information from. Not always a hundred percent accurate, but it certainly gives us at least a broad stroke of what we're looking at.
Okay, Curtis, you're good. Okay, I just have a quick follow-up on that. Let's say some of the information is incorrect. Let's say you you have it as, you know, non-conforming fifteen feet, it's really twenty feet. It's not going to affect anybody, it's not going to affect anything, we're not, we're not making anybody move their house or so let's make sure we.
That is correct, yes. Uh, we won't be making anybody move their house. That's really just for uh future ideas. If we were to tweak the zoning there and we figure out that the average setback along the street would be, you know, fifteen feet based on those estimates, that gives us an idea of where we should be adjusting those front yard setback requirements or wherever the requirement might be. The idea of a study like this, very similar to what we did in the Dutchneck community, is not to get every property in conformance. That's going to be impossible. The idea is to get properties closer in conformance. That way, they may not require variance, or if they do require variance, it's not as large or intimidating a variance as what otherwise been required. So if you go for a floor area ratio variance and your floor area ratio is thirty-five percent compared to allowable seventeen percent, that might seem like a much larger number, but it's around twenty-two percent instead of seventeen percent. Or, you know, if we increase the allowable, be more increasing the allowable FAR, that would become less of a burden for the applicant. So I just trying to bring people more into conformance, but certainly not trying to make anybody less conforming.
Right, and I'll, I'll just add a couple of things. So the only time would be if um it would have an effect is if someone was going to do a renovation on their house, let's say, and their setback wasn't conforming. We may ask them to come before the board to, you know, explain what they're doing. And it doesn't mean that we just don't out of hand reject because we've had people come before the board and not conforming and we've approved the application because it made sense to to do it. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware of, just because your lot may be five feet non-conforming, it doesn't mean like, oh my God, you know, that's it, I can never do a renovation.
Yeah, exactly, there's a whole process to get a variance. Um, Curtis is on the zoning board of adjustment, I do see our zoning board chair over there, hi Susan. Um, so there is a process to request relief. And so oftentimes we will look at zoning regulations, we think of it as the law, which it kind of is, right? It, you don't want to break the law, but that being said, if I'm driving down a highway and I want to go seventy-five instead of sixty-five, I can't try to request that permission beforehand, that's a set law. Zoning is set up in recognition that not every property is going to be able to comply with your zoning regulations. So there's a mechanism and a means to ask for relief for some of those standards. And that would be for a residential property, especially in front of the zoning board.
Whoa.
Sorry, I thought you were waving hi, sorry. No, that was my fault, sorry.
You'll have a chance to speak, I just don't. Um, you're only going seventy-five if radar says you are.
That's true too, yes.
Okay. Um, okay. Any, anybody else have any questions for David before I turn it over to the public?
How difficult would it be to have like a non-conforming, like zoning law game? How difficult for residents to comply or are maybe?
Uh, it depends on a case by case basis, right? So um.
You're only going to need a variance if you're kind, if you're going to make a renovation. If, you know, there could be every, every lot could be non-conforming. There's no reason to get a conforming at this point unless every house wants to make a renovation, then maybe um to make it conforming, maybe we need to change the setback or the side yard. But there, there's no impact if there's no renovation.
The idea behind this is to make those zoning regulations more uh in tune with the surrounding area. So that way, when somebody does request a variance in the future, that variance isn't so great. So theoretically, it's designed to make the process a little bit easier or may not even need a variance.
Right.
There are instances where if you change a zoning ordinance and there's an application in front of the zoning board, say for like a use variance, that could become a bigger issue. So not that this is envisioned here, but say hypothetically, the board recommends and the council says, you know what? We don't want single family houses anymore in Marion City. It's a prohibited use. And then somebody comes in on a vacant lot afterwards and says, hey, we want to build a vacant house, we want to build a new house. That's a tough challenge because your governing body just said, we don't want this use and somebody wants to build that use now. So that would be a potential overruling of zoning regulations. With this though, tweaking the bulk standards especially, it's designed to make that process a little bit easier. So it, it's always situational, but the idea behind the study like this are to get properties either in compliance, so they don't need a variance, or that the requested variance relief is not as great as would otherwise be required.
Right, we, we've done it in other areas where we've changed the bulk standards to just get al- almost every house, every lot, I should say, in, in um, in compliance and confor- conforming. You're not going to get, like David says, you're not going to get every lot. You can look at every number and you're not going to get every lot conforming, but if you change, if you could change the zoning to get ninety percent, let's say, or eighty percent or seventy percent, whatever that number is, all those homes, when they make a renovation, they won't have, mo- most of them won't have to come before the board to get a variance because they'll be conforming. The new, the new requirements, yeah.
I mean, to answer your question, we have seen few applications from that area to the zoning board and Curtis can correct me, but I don't think anything has been denied. You may have, you may have asked them to come back multiple times with modifications, but to my memory, I don't remember.
I mean, there have been times when uh in West Windsor Township, I want to use that broadly, where uh a residential application may have been just a little too much. But uh, and Susan can correct me if I'm wrong, Susan Abbey, the chair of the committee. I can't remember a, a full-blown denial within the boundaries that we're talking about tonight, can you? You can, okay, you speak, you can speak to that one, you can add public comment, thank you. Um, one, one question I have and might be beyond the broad, it might be beyond the scope of tonight. But uh, one concern I have and I'm, I'm imagining that it's shared by the residents is um maintaining the character of the community. Yes, all the bulk regulations that we've talked about with side yards and maximum in pre- previous coverage, floor area ratio, they can help with that. But David, I'm wondering if you could just broadly talk about what mechanisms a community can use to preserve the character of a neighborhood community like Marion City.
Yeah, great question. Um, planning is ultimately a balance of competing interests and a place like Marion City, uh, the other historic neighborhoods throughout West Windsor and New Jersey, they all share the same problem of a balancing act between preserving the character of an area and also allowing for homeowners to have some sort of opportunity to upgrade their property, right? It's always that competing interest of, you know, we want to maintain how we feel about this area, but also sometimes people want a closet in their old bedroom, you know, it's, bedrooms used to be designed without closets. There's a number of different mechanisms to help regulate that, right? And the township already has some of those in place. So for example, a floor area ratio is designed to uh limit the bulk and size of a house and intensity of a house on a single lot. Uh, that's one of the goals of a floor area ratio requirement. Some communities also opt to install design criteria. So if you're going to build a house, this is what we generally want you to look at. And those design criteria can be very specific. If you go down to Kate May, those are very specific regulations, uh, or they can be more general, uh, just designs that are complementary to the surrounding development. Uh, sometimes they can be a little bit subjective, sometimes they can be a little bit more objective. Uh, but typically you'd be trying to preserve that character of the area through your bulk regulations and potentially design regulations.
Now, there's no restriction on color or, right?
As of right now, no, uh, again, we haven't made any recommendations for this area. Uh, but even in Dutchneck, I don't think that was one of the.
Follow up on the, the point and the question. Yeah, there's, there's houses that go, someone tears down a house and they put something that they feel is in good taste, but it does not match the surrounding, you know, area or the homes of, you know, in, in the surrounding blocks. What's to prevent that from happening here, especially with the lot sizes are small? Someone buys two lots, they tear down both houses and they build the castle.
So right now, the thing that's preventing that would be the, the lack of available large lots. So in order to build a larger McMansion like that, you would have to be able to buy multiple lots right next to each other and then combine them together.
Right.
But you're still then contending with your floor area ratio requirement. So even if you were to build, combine four lots, say they were all ten thousand square feet each, you're still looking at a forty thousand square foot lot and if you multiply that by a floor area ratio of Yep, uh, hold on, you guys are quicker than me. Thirteen percent, you'd be looking at around fifty-two hundred square feet, so.
Pretty big house.
It's still a very big house, but don't forget it's going to be split up two levels as well, so the way you prevent.
Yeah, but it's fifty-two hundred square feet compared to thirteen or fifteen hundred square foot homes and surrounding it.
Yes.
It'll, it'll, it won't, it won't conform to the neighborhood. It'll be conforming and, you know, setback inside, but it won't conform to the neighborhood.
All the lots there are non-conforming.
No.
Unless they get a seventy-two thousand square foot lot, they have to go to the zoning board before they knock any home down to get a variance to rebuild anything on a non-conforming lot.
Okay, I mean, I, I know that I'm not big on hypotheticals, I'm just trying to, like, there's, there's no, there's no zoning for taste.
Right now, there, there are no design standards, that is correct. So uh, you can have as many roof lines right now as you'd like, as long as you're meeting those uh bulk criteria and FAR criteria.
Is there any quote residential design criteria in West Windsor Township?
Uh, not for single family, no. No, for some of our uh multi-family developments and or commercial developments, yeah, we do have design criteria there, uh, for example. But not for single family right now. Actually, the only loose design criteria we have for single family is if there is a subdivision application anywhere in the community, um, and if it's even a two lot subdivision, we do have design, uh, design criteria that stipulate that the houses can't be identical to one another, right? They need to be substantially different designs. The reason for that is that regulation and the ordinance is trying to prevent cookie cutter houses where they all look the same. Um, so typically, if we do have a larger subdivision like that, that's single family, there needs to be a number of different re- residential design standards. But that's really the only thing we have. If somebody has a vacant lot or they want to knock down a house and build a new one, right now, no, we have no design criteria for what that house can be. If you want to do Tudor, if you want to do uh mid-century modern, right now, there's no criteria.
Thank you. Anybody else would uh have any questions for David? Nope, okay. With that said, um, got an eager audience. Um, I'll open it up to the public, whoever would like to step up and speak on tonight's uh agenda item, please step up. Yep.
Well, we'll swear everyone in tonight.
Susan Abbey.
Thank you.
Susan Abbey, Fod Scott Avenue. I also add in the chair of.
Before you start, before you start, I'll just swear you in. Do you swear or? Do you, do you swear or um that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a resident of Marion City and I'm speaking as a resident, but I am also the, excuse me, the chair of the zoning board and I've been on it for about fifteen years, so uh, I've seen a lot of what's come before the zoning board in Marion City. Just for your information, the conforming use, the house in the lower, the red, lower left, I believe it's a two-family because the address has an A and a B, so I would be very surprised if it had four. And the same thing with one of the houses on Alexander. The one house um across from the Crawford Woods, that's very thin that you talked about that. That was two building lots, one on Alexander and one on Borosco. And they wanted to put a garage on Borosco. So the zoning board said, okay, because it actually had originally been designed to have a house on it. Therefore, the, the board, you would agree, felt that that was okay to put the garage on there. It has, yeah.
Well.
It has a full kitchen.
I don't want to eat your department because in that, in that situation, it was
It is, yeah.
A uh, uh, us, it di- it didn't have like a full kitchen, we did not allow them to have a kitchen in there.
Um.
Sorry, interrupt.
You mentioned about teardowns and there have been two in the neighborhood. One is that lot we were just discussing. And they came in with a house that fits perfectly, right off the bat. I mean, most people, if they're, if they're new to the township, they probably think it's an original house. The second one, which was what I was laughing when you said, did anybody ever come in with something, you know, is a house on Lily. And that was a very tiny house that had been moved here from one of the air force bases and it had been abandoned for thirty years. They wanted to tear it down and the applicant came in with a plan for a forty-six hundred square foot house with a turret in the front and all kinds of things. And I think some people in here came to that meeting to talk about it.
I remember that one.
We didn't deny it, we said, this is not what we're looking for. He came back with a thirty-five hundred square foot proposal. We said, you've got to fit in to the character of the neighborhood, this, this is just not it. And um, finally, we used an example of a house in Dutchneck that had been built um on an empty lot that was approved, that we also had approved, that was a four-square design, which is very common for an old neighborhood. And that is, is perfect. So that, that's the history on that.
So the process works, in other words.
The process worked. And I have to say, one of the reasons a neighborhood still has the character it has, in my opinion, is because of the zoning board and the fact that we've said, we've, we've pushed, you got, you got to fit in. You know, we don't want some super angular, modern thing, uh, something that's massive next to, you know, a little home. The majority of the houses um are one or one and a half story. And if they're a two-story, they have no attic space. They have a very low pitched hip roof. And that's something that I think maybe should be considered when it comes to height. Because these days, people will often build a house and the third, and it's basically got a third floor. And because the way West Windsor calculates height, we set it at thirty-five, Sam, let me know if I'm correct. We set it at thirty-five, but thirty-five is not the top of the roof. It's halfway between the eve and the top of the roof, which means the house could be forty feet tall. When you have a house that's only one and a half, at the most, two stories, forty feet is huge, especially if it's going to be next to a one, one-story home. So I, I think you might want to take a look at a height and either say, I thi- I think I did some calculations on the four squares, which are the tallest. And I think the house is like twenty-five feet to the top. So you may want to take a look at height.
Yeah. Potentially, uh, um, roof pitches as well.
I mean, you know, we have some houses that are one story with very tall roofs and they have dormers in the back. And that's how people expanded their space. I think, uh, I did a calculation years ago when that big monster was, came in. That if the FAR was set at 18%, 95% of the houses would conform. And considering there are some lots that are actually half of a lot size from the original, that's probably a pretty good, I think anything over 90, 90% conforming would be pretty good. So you may want to figure out, well, what, what percentage are we kind of aiming for here? What is, what is a good number? We do, as you said, there are some places with multiple lots and that can throw off the averages a little bit. I'm looking at you, ma'am, over there and myself, who throws off Montgomery, she's got three, basically every four lots, and I've got four lots on Scott. So, you know, that kind of throws off, I think. Um, I know at one point, um, Allison had mentioned years ago that perhaps there should be a designation, no new lots, less than 10,000 square feet. The average here is now 14,000 square feet, whatever. Because there are a couple of houses, usually if they got more than one lot, they, they centered the house. But there are some lots where it's on the one lot and what had been another lot is there. And it probably is pretty small. So could decide whether or not there should be a, a minimum lot size for a new subdivision. I don't know if you can make that difference between what's a conforming lot and what creating a new subdivision would, would be.
David, you're taking these notes, right?
I'm sorry?
I'm making sure he's taking notes on your suggestion.
Um, most of the homes, as you said, are 1,000 to 2,000 square feet. The average is 1,400. I think there's a real need, my personal opinion, I think there's a real need for a neighborhood with homes this size. We don't need to have either condos or a four, 5,000, 6,000 square foot house. I think there's a real need, and actually it's a trend to build houses with smaller houses these days. Um, the neighborhood has single people, married couples, couple with their children or two, people downsizing retirees. It's a good mix. Starter homes are important, I think, for people to be able.
As somebody who's been looking, I agree. Trust me.
Yeah. Not that those are starter prices, but they are starter. They may be starter homes. The side yard setbacks are really a challenge. There are some houses where they have the driveway on one side and then the house is only five feet from the side yard setback. Probably, and, and what the zoning board has always said is put your addition on the back. You have, typically you probably have a deeper lot than you do wide. Put the addition on the back. It solves two problems. Uh, you don't see it. It doesn't change, you know, the character of the house. And also if your house is five feet from the property line, you can, Sam, is this correct? You can still go back. You can follow that existing in the back. So if you have a house that's five feet, you could still add on the back and not have to worry about the 15 foot or 20 foot side yard setback.
Right.
There has been an issue a couple of times. I know we don't have an HOA. And sometimes some HOAs deal with, um, landscaping fencing. I know there are a lot of HOAs that say no solid fencing. That's why you'll see, you know, that type of fencing. It can be an issue when you have a house that's five feet from the side. This did come up on a house on Scott where the, luckily the neighbor came ahead of time and said, hey, I'm going to put up a six foot fence in my backyard. And she said, oh my, please don't. I will be looking out of my living room and kitchen window at a barricade. So I don't know, I, I don't know what that solution should be. There are lots of people that have hedges and fences. Um, maybe the solid fencing or, you know, maybe it shouldn't be solid fencing, maybe it should. Maybe it goes off the back of the house rather than coming from the, the side of the house and back. I'm, I'm not sure.
What do you do if you have a pet and you want to let the pet out in the backyard and it's not fenced in?
Yeah. Um, you, you talked about the uses and it's really pretty much just residential. The only things that are not are things that have been there forever. Firehouse and Brothers Pizza. And I, I would wonder if we can just say, s- single family residential housing and leave out nursing homes and, uh, multi-family homes and agricultural uses and all of those other things, because I think we really want to keep it residential. Rather than people saying, well, I'm going to turn this into something else. Perhaps, um, any teardown should go to the zoning board, which I guess would just be saying, none are allowed. You have to go to the zoning board, which is pretty much the rule already right now. Um, there have been times that people in the neighborhood have said to me, well, I don't really want them to change the zoning because I want the zoning board to review things because they've done a good job of retaining the character. And, you know, we really can't do that. We do need to change the zoning and how we, how we use the decisions, the zoning board and the criteria the zoning board has used all these years. That's the challenge of how do you get that in writing? I do, I, I do myself, uh, believe that we should be called historic neighborhood. And that's a label. It's got to be clear to people that it's not, you can't paint your house this color. You can't do this, that, and the other thing. It's a label. It's a recognition. And it also says to the state and the county, don't push your highway through here. That's historic neighborhood. You never know what people are planning in the future. But it's a recognition. What you can do to your house is what's in the zoning details, not driven anything at all by that label historic. Um, a really big question is going to be what happens with ADUs. And I know we struggle with that on, uh, the zoning board. And I understand that the state is going to be making some decisions as to whether this is going to be included in your FAR or it's separate from your FAR, which could add an awful lot.
Yes. So, uh, just to interrupt, to piggyback on that comment, yes. So the legislature has come out with two drafts pieces of regarding accessory dwelling units. I, I would be lying to you if I understood, if I told you I understood all the rules and regulations in them because they don't make a lot of sense to me. But there is a potential that should that legislation pass, accessory dwelling units would be permitted on any single family or two family residentially zoned lot. It has certain references to a model ordinance, which has not yet been crafted, but it talks about you can't regulate density. It sets a side yard setback requirement, but things like improvement coverage and FAR. I don't know if the legislature always knows what improvement or FA coverage really is. So we're waiting to, no offense to the legislature, but we're waiting to see eventually what that model ordinance is going to look like. But that is a huge question mark. You're right.
And my understanding is that an ADU accessory dwelling unit requires a full kitchen and a full bathroom.
Yes. Yeah, you cannot.
Which means this is not just a little building you put in the back with a home office, you know, or whatever. But this is something beyond.
I think the minimum.
Which is basically two houses on one lot.
It was a 400 that they established?
That's bigger than a lot of houses.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, no, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a maximum 1,200, but minimum 300. This is a S1106, but maximum height of no less than 20 feet. So typically, yeah, yeah, uh, which is kind of high for an accessory structure, but, uh, it, it's going to be a whole thing. Uh, but we're keeping, we're definitely keeping our eyes on that. But that, you're right. That's a huge question mark.
Well, one of the things to think about that as well is we've got a really old sewer system and water system. So if, if you allow massive development or, or these ADUs and, you know, all these other things, if you double the number of bathrooms and the number of kitchens and all those things, um, that could be a real problem. We have already replaced our line that goes from the street to the house because it's galvanized pipe. Yeah. So, um, I, I think that would really be a question as to how, how much, how much bigger the houses should be, how many bathrooms and, and whatever you should add. We have successfully added and approved, um, many additions. I think you'd be surprised if you went through the neighborhood and went into some backyard, you go, oh my God, I never knew there was this whole big addition because the front of the house still looks the same. And there's a nice big addition on the back. Four squares with a two story addition. I think as, as to the historic benefit, we don't really have a whole lot of historic stuff. We have the, the farm aspect of it, which is fantastic. Skank farmhouse. And we have a couple of the older neighborhoods. But I think that the planning board and the zoning board over the last 10 years has really been mindful of creating sort of a village look on 571. The two, the two buildings, one that the zoning board approved and one that the planning board approved that are being built right now. Bring in closer to the street, trying to create more of what looks like it might have been there for a while. And I kind of view that and Bari and City as sort of being that whole area, being part of that whole area with Nash Park, Bari and City, the Crawford Woods and the Village Center type development there. I think that fits. We have our massive thing going on across the tracks. So I would, um, I would hope that we can figure out some way to define what fits in. As I said, that 4,500 square foot thing with the turret, the guy came and said, I think this really fits into the character of the neighborhood. It is a judgment call. So what do you do with that? I do have, in case you're interested, years ago, me and a couple of other residents, we made like a little booklet of just what the house styles are. They were built, um, between late 1800, 1890 something, and the majority of it by the 40s with sporadic here and there um, of additional ones. And what it is, is it just outlines what are the characteristics of these different kinds of houses? What features do they have? And what are some good ways to add on?
Love that.
I have copies for you. I have copies for the board.
Okay.
If it, if you want it, if you want to accept it. And one for Sam.
Thank you. Sam, can you just get any?
I think that's it. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Taking a lot of notes. Thank you so much, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
David, I do have a follow-up question to Susan's in particular. It's, uh, um, this idea of historic neighborhood as a designation. Uh, how is that done in the state of New Jersey without regulating, you know?
It doesn't have anything to do with the state unless you apply to be on the state historic register, which is not what we're talking about. I mean, we call, we call Edinburgh an historic neighborhood.
So it can be a label at the local level.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're making a recommendation to make it historic in front of the state.
No, 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 no.
A label at the local township.
It's a label at the local level, just recognition that this is, this is what it is. This is the character. Just like Pensneck, Edinburgh, Grover's Mill.
Have other communities in the state of New Jersey gone that route?
I, I represent a couple of communities that actually have, you know, historic neighborhoods where there's a zoning ordinance adopted and there are certain regulations for, if you want to tear down houses. But this would be more of, um, uh, we'll say historic. Bring that idea with any type of future zoning or design standards, but not necessarily designating the community as historic. So almost similar to what was discussed with Dutch Neck, right? We weren't looking to necessarily designate Dutch Neck as a historic neighborhood. But any future zoning or design criteria should keep in mind the historic nature of that area.
I think it's, I think it's an important label for the reason that in the real estate world, we've got a lot of money coming in as investments, buying up houses, renting them out. And they don't care what the neighborhood looks like. And I think that label would also say to applicants of all kinds, this is sort of what we're going for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Hi there. Good evening. Stacy Fox.
Hi.
Nine Bari and Avenue.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm that the testimony shall be the truth? Thanks.
I do. Just listening to everything you've been saying tonight, if this is still in the planning stages, I would love to hear about a permanent denial of lot combining for the purposes of somebody being able to build a much larger home or build up or buy up four lots and put in apartments. Um, because of our close proximity to the train station, I think that puts us in very serious danger of, um, you know, folks coming in and trying to turn it into a big investment for them. And so being historic would be something that would help us battle against that. Um, but, you know, people have a price. So there's no saying that four houses in a row wouldn't sell. And then that would make the property vulnerable to going completely out of the character of the neighborhood. So I like what Susan said about just single family homes, period, end of story. And then not ever letting them be, you know, 4,000 square feet or, um, so that was one thing. Um, the, the one thing I disagreed with was about, um, the fences. Cause years ago I lived in Lambertville and the houses were all so close together. It was like Brooklyn. And we all had six foot fences and it really helped us manage our children and pets and privacy. And, um, so I thought that was, uh, really nice. So like, if I were to start filling my yard these days with pets and grandkids, I would be looking to put up a fence. So I don't know if there's a restriction right now, um, but, um, all for it if folks wanted, wanted to do that. And, um, as far as accessory dwelling units go, um, I myself just had a, an application before the zoning board. And it's because there's two things. The reason why they're talking about it in Trenton is because there's a huge housing shortage in this state. And a lot of our seniors aren't leaving. They're not all migrating to Florida anymore. They want to stay here. And in, in my particular case, and in a lot of cases, people my age, they have a multi-generational family situation where their 20-somethings are in transition and want to live home and save money. Cause it's harder than ever for someone that age to buy property or even rent. And then they have their parents to take care of, like myself. I've been trying to convince my mother to move in with me as she becomes less capable and more frail. And she refuses to be in my house. She wants her own place. And so I went before the zoning board, um, trying to, you know, we have an old carport we need to tear down. I was going to put a, a guest room for her on the bottom and then another one for any one of our very large, we have a large family, uh, five adult children procreating, et cetera. Um, and I couldn't get that lower level. It has to be a garage. And, you know, my hope is that eventually the state will come around and say, okay, accessory dwelling units are are legal and then I can come back to the zoning board and, um, hopefully my mom will still be um, okay to live where she is with some help. But it's, I think it's very important that we find a way to do that. So I agree that it's too much like the way Susan described adding onto the side so close to property lines. It is difficult and each property has to be looked at individually. In my case, I already had a carport in one place, so the footprint wouldn't be changing. But I know that each house is unique. I would just, um, ask you as you create the rules to think about a creative way that you can, um, allow for multi-generational families to be able to live together um, and not have to move away or, um, they really, you know, send their elders to a facility. And maybe that's not what we prefer to do. a facility. Maybe that's not what we prefer to do. So, um, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, just, um, raise your right hand, please, and tell us your name and spell.
R A N A L L O, one oh six Harris Road.
Thank you. Do you, do you?
I'm sorry. R A N A L L O.
Can you speak into the microphone? I think that's the problem.
Just raise your right hand and do you swear or affirm that the testimony shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, forgive me if I'm kind of all over the place with this. I got a few things to cover and I'm gonna be a little scattered. So I found it interesting that you were talking about character, um, and trying to keep it similar. Um, I'll bring up, for example, something that just happened recently at one fourteen Harris Road. Um, the house, the house does not conform whatsoever. I called and asked if it required a variance and I was told it did not because, and it was an addition. I guess because it was built on the existing foundation. But if you drive by, the house does not conform whatsoever. It actually more than doubled in square feet. And I'm just a little bit confused as to earlier, it was kind of like things would require variances. You want it to conform. And in this case, it doesn't fit the neighborhood whatsoever, um, at all. Um, in size, look and in price. So there's that. And then the other thing is, living at one oh six, the neighbor, I've lived there my entire life. Growing up, it was, you know, the house actually at one fourteen that I'm talking about, next to that was my grandmother at one ten. So I'm very familiar with that property. Um, and I'm friends with the people that live there now. And I went in and I looked out the kitchen window. And now all you see is huge side of the house. It blocks the sunlight. It's, it just doesn't fit. But going back to living at one oh six Harris, when that household, somebody came in, wanted to do a remodel. From what I recall, there was a variance required. The first plan was rejected, then something was approved. It was built. I can tell you now, I can look out my kitchen window at the sink and I'm looking into their bathroom window. Things to consider, right? It's, you know, you walk out the back door and now you're walking out at a house because the property lines are so close. I know a couple of houses down, they actually share a driveway. Two houses share one driveway. So there's a lot of things that need to be considered. And that's why when I saw one fourteen going up, I was really confused at why there was no variance. Especially after experiencing what was built directly next to where I live. Um, so these are things that should be taken into account. Like, I don't know if I can ask or how I can find out what would have been required for them to build that. It's already built. It's too late, but did something slip by? Was it done the way it should have been done? I know that it wasn't originally because they started to tear the house down without permits and they had a stop construction issued. So.
They, they didn't come before the board. I don't remember them.
It went.
No, they didn't need a variance. They were well within the thirteen percent FAR. What happened is that the zoning permit was issued. They were conforming. But they failed to get a construction permit and a demolition permit. And that's why the construction department shut them down until they went through the construction division review.
But it wouldn't have needed a variance because it.
Cause it met the zoning requirements for that area.
Okay. All right. It still doesn't conform though, as far as what everything looks like, like you're not.
There are no architectural guidelines.
Right.
So it, it met the FAR, the size of the home they could build.
I, I understand that, but it, from what you were speaking to earlier, it was trying to keep things consistent and it's definitely not consistent.
That's what we're trying to do now with this, correct?
It's the outlier.
That, that's part of this study is to try to get the character of the neighborhood. And maintain, maintain the character of neighborhood. And if we could do that and keep the bulk standards. Um, then a house like this may not be built in the future.
I know if I recall right, I think it was in the twenty twenty master plan, they mentioned that in a blurb about Barien City, about things. You know, maintaining the character. It was just a concern because you live there.
Yep.
And now this thing goes up. When you think we all know the, the house next to St. David's. I mean, I, if you live in town, you know that house. It's, you don't want to run into those situations. I'm not bashing it, but it doesn't fit.
I, I hear you.
Yeah.
Hi. How are you? Could you raise your right hand? Um, state your name, spell your name and, um, I'll swear you in.
Hi, um, Jacob Dick, uh, spelled J A C O B D I C K. Uh, I live at one ten Harris Road. Um, I'm actually the house Kevin was talking about.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I, I kind of agree with a lot of what, a lot of what Kevin said, um, regarding the historic nature of the of Barien City. I kind of like the idea that there's like, they're like quaint houses and they're part of what makes Barien City kind of unique is that every house is a little bit different, but everybody kind of has that historical character to it. So I think with the, um, with, uh, the new, with like a, when we're, when thinking about zoning codes, I think, um, hit architecture, maybe some architectural guidance should be considered, but at the same time, I, I do kind of see part of the problem, I think, that comes along with investors. The reason they come in is because a lot of people will sell their house. Um, because the house that they live in might not fit the family that they have. Um, so for example, in my family. I, I moved in when the, um, I moved in when, uh, I had no kids. It was just me and my wife. And now we have two kids and we have one bathroom. That's a bit. Yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit of a challenge. Uh, there's a lineup every morning. It's not, not a fun situation. So, um, you know, we're thinking about making an addition. And, you know, I think part of what should be considered with the new zoning requirements is, um, the idea of like neighborhood kind of permanence. I don't know if that's the term for it, but it's the idea of trying to keep families in their home where they are, um, instead of having them move out because in this real estate market to buy another house in West Windsor, cause I, I love West Windsor. That's like, that's why we moved here. I live, it's convenient. They have good schools. There is a good community. There's lots of activities for people to do. You know, in those today's real estate market, if, you know, I'm, I wouldn't be able to stay in West Windsor. There's eight percent interest rates and, you know, houses that go for a million dollars. The house next door, one fourteen just sold for a million dollars. So. Any house that I would try and buy would be somewhere. And this is not about me, but I'm just saying, the idea is I think we should consider trying to make it so that maybe people can put on modest additions that would try and keep families in their homes. That's kind of, instead of kind of making it so they either have to kind of suffer with what they have or without. You know, so, but, um, but yeah, as for architectural styles, I think the house next door doesn't match at all. They it technically meets all the zoning requirements for Barien City, but Barien City has lots that are different shapes and sizes. I think the R one C zoning code is for acre and three eighths or something. And my, my lot is quarter acre, but so it's, it's, uh, definitely doesn't conform, but technically his conformed and but it doesn't match the neighborhood. So I think that's kind of
Okay.
That needs to be considered. Um, so.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for, thank you for.
Thank you.
Listening.
One fourteen, it's a one million, one fourteen, yes. No, that was no, 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 different address. One ten, East one ten.
Hi, could you, uh, could you raise your right hand and do you swear or affirm that the testimony shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
And please give us your name and, and spell it for us.
Susan, S U S A N, Conlon, C O N L O N, and I live at ninety-eight Harris Road. You just heard from a couple of my neighbors, Jacob and Kevin. So I kind of like to follow up to their comments and, you know, the house that they were referring to. Um, I believe is now under contract. Um, I agree that that house is totally out of scale and out of character. Um, for the, for the neigh, um, our neighborhood. And while I understand that it may have met the requirements for them to proceed to construct that house. There's, the, the result of that house, I think, should be like a cautionary tale. Do we want to end up with more houses like that in the neighborhood? And I would think most people here, like, you know, they can express their own opinions, but I would think no. I mean, I, you know, I, I, it, it's about six or seven houses down from me. You know, I kind of understand it, um, how this all took, took place, but that's with some more guidelines and with some more direct involvement and oversight, I think we could have had a much nicer house in that location. And it would have fit, um, with the character of the neighborhood. I, Curtis, I really appreciate your comments that you, um, said earlier, I think that really is the key here to recognize and respect the character of the neighborhood. And work with that, be, you know, in the flow with that and not against it. I'll also say that in some of the applications that have passed, and I've been to a few of those zoning board meetings, and I think the board does a good job. That's the board. That's who we have now. That could change. Two years, five years, we could have different people who have, who don't have the same um, concerns or considerations. And, you know, so I think that establishing some guidelines is probably a good idea. And, um, the other thing I think to think about is a few of you mentioned when people want to come in and do renovations to their house. And I, we do see a lot of that. I, we, we did a, um, renovation to the back of our house, two thousand and, uh, one or two thousand and two. Um, and I totally get that. I think it's, um, great for people to be able to expand their house and, and stay in their house. A lot of people, they move here into Barien City and they don't necessarily want to move to another neighborhood. So I'm, I'm in favor of that. But there's difference between people coming in because they want an expansion to the house they live in. And investors coming in who want to take a house and just make it bigger and make a bigger buck. And, you know, I know that probably legally you can't, um, discern and make, um, decisions based on, on those judgments, but, you know, I think that we as residents, we are concerned about with that. We want to see that the changes being made to the neighborhood. That, that we're having respect for the character of the neighborhood and for our neighbors. And, uh, just to, um, second what Stacy said about, um, there is a critical housing shortage and I think we have to, um, address that and be realistic about that. And if perhaps at some point accessory dwelling units become a part of, um, you know, of um, more people start using those. I'm just curious, um, and maybe you can speak to, to whether that would be applied throughout the entire township.
So if the state passes legislation, then that would apply for every single uh, and two-family zoning district in New Jersey. So it would be applicable not only here, but in everywhere else in West Windsor. If the legislation does not pass, um, municipalities still have the option of adopting regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units and they can stipulate where they can be located, including zoning districts, sizes, um, heights, things like that. So if the state passes that legislation, then it'll be everywhere. If they don't, then municipalities still maintain that option of, do they want it? And if so, where? And after you decide where, then how much? Yeah, so.
Thank you. And, and just the last thing I'll say is that I think this is a really good meeting to, tonight. Um, I commend you for, uh, working on this plan. Putting it on the website so that everybody could see it in advance, um, having the, the meeting note, uh, notice so that the public could come out. We're learning more about this. We heard a lot of good things tonight. And I would just hope that as a next step, that you, as you get to the next um, part of this, um, study, that you have another meeting like this and, um, talk to the, um, talk to the residents about what you think, um, is the next part of the process, including those guidelines. So, thank you.
So, uh, Susan, the hearing is being taped. So anybody, it will be on our website. So anybody who is not here today, want to watch the whole meeting, it is on our website. It will be permanently on our website. Uh, the whole purpose of this hearing is to get feedback. So I would encourage all of you to tell us what you like, what you don't like. So then these gentlemen can go and do, uh, go ahead and do some kind of a document that will be discussed again in public. So we have a long way from finishing, but this whole exercise of today is to gather feedback from everybody involved. Um, and if you all agree a hundred percent, makes our life easy. No problem.
Well, you know, this is never gonna happen, but. So, so then you suggested, oh, people should offer more feedback. And how would you suggest that's another meeting like this or letters or emails?
This could be a year process in front of the planning board. So there, Dave and I'll take whatever recommendations come from the public in the board. We'll put it into a more formal document that I'll put up on the website. I'll send it out to whoever wants to get it. And then we'll have another meeting here and we'll, we'll go through that. So there's no timeframe on when we want to get it done. It could be a year before it even leaves the planning board and goes to council.
And it could be that, you know, the, the next step, taking some of those recommendations, thoughts, putting it in a format, making recommendations about certain zoning or design guidelines. I could present it and everybody here can say, I hate that. And that would be completely fine. I would, I don't want to take personal offense to that. And then we would take what your comment would be and rework it again and again and again. The good thing is, as Sam was saying, we could take our time with this because there's really no deadline in terms of getting this done. So we can really take our time and do it the right way.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thanks for the transparency.
Thank you.
Regarding comments, several people have you made about maintaining the character. There was a request to do similar thing in other the neighborhood. If you all can decide what the character is, then it again makes it a lot easier to define. And just one clarification for the thing come up for Sam. If a new home builder doesn't need a variance, then all it happens is you approve the zoning and goes to Jason, right? And Jason has no say in how ugly it looks or how beautiful it looks. Okay. So if it's complying, then really the township, all we do is it, it uh, conforms with the state code, then there's not much we can do. We may look at it, what we can do, but at, at present, not much we can do.
Swear or affirm that the testimony shall give will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Please tell us your name and spell it.
John Coran, K O R A N. Five Scott Avenue. I'd like to make a couple of comments about parameters. And brought the, the character, design, design parameters and, and that, that sort of thing. He also brought up the thing about the, um, most conforming aspect of all of these lots was basically the rear, uh, the rear, um, setback. Um, that might be a good way to approach most of the, um, renovations that anybody might like to do. Possibly set a percentage of the entire FAR and use that as a limit for how far you would go so that maybe you wouldn't have to go all the way back. Block somebody else's view. So if there's a certain percentage, you could go back so that, you know, you just wouldn't double the house and go back that far that you'd mess it up for your neighbor. Uh, one of the other things possibly is, is total height of houses. I'll just throw a number out, say thirty feet would be a good height at the peak. Most people could get their two floors in, uh, our house has a, a nine-foot ceiling on the first floor. Eight and a half foot on the second floor and the, the, the house is twenty-six from the, the ground at the peak. And that's very comfortable. Um, and our roof line is also, um, incorporating a shed dormer approach. That also brings up what I would think is an important thing that might help with the design parameters is maybe establish certain roof lines that are basically like you have your mansard roof, you have certain hips, uh, shed dormers. Ways that the actual roof can incorporate a second floor and still reach only that peak. That peak height that you have in the house. What else is? Um, there are a lot of architectural plans, um, that were new houses that have old styles with them. So there, there are lots of plans that are out there. People search for, search for things like that. Um, but again, I'd like to see if we could retain the character of the neighborhood, which I agree. But again, I'd like to see if we could retain the character of the neighborhood, which I agree with people. Basically, thank you.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, so sworn. And please give us your name and spell it.
My name is Aylin Green, A Y L I N G R E E N. And I represent the West Windsor Arts Council located at nine five two Alexander Road. Yeah, yes, you too. So we're, we feel very much a part of the neighborhood in Bering City and was interested in the zoning study and in, you know, the master plan in general. And just wanted to talk a little bit about our future vision for our use of the, of the firehouse building and how that might be considered in, when we're looking at planning in the neighborhood. We moved in in 2010 and we're a very new nonprofit organization at that time. And that's when we started offering classes and performances and, you know, various community events, both at that location and other places around the township. And so in the, you know, ensuing fourteen years, we've continued to grow. And we now find ourselves, you know, kind of starting to max, max out on what we have available within the portion of the building that we are in currently, which is about half of the building. So there is another part of the building, which I think was from the beginning, sort of part of the vision for the art center that we might eventually be able to utilize that as well for, you know, further expanding our, our offerings for the community. But we're not sure whether that, you know, will occur or not. We've been sort of given some information that perhaps not because there are zoning problems, especially with parking for the arts council. And so, you know, since this is a brainstorming session, I just wanted to share the intention or the, the desire of the art center to, to, if we can grow into that side, to be able to do that and to be able to find solutions to any parking, you know, problems that there might be that might be caused by that. One area that we currently have is that we have an agreement with the train station, the, the parking authority, to be able to use part of the Wallace lot, which we have been doing more and more in the last few years. So, you know, things like that, you know, finding solutions to make sure that we don't negatively impact the neighborhood. We want to be a positive influence in the neighborhood. We want to attract people to the art center, to enjoy it, to get together and to form, you know, stronger bonds in the community. So, you know, that, but that might require some more partnership with planning and zoning to enable us to grow, to really be able to serve the community fully. So that's basically the, you know, what I wanted to say. That might include things also to help people really view us as an art center. I think, you know, this is a little bit in tension with the historical, you know, nature of the building. It's also not registered, you know, officially historical, but it is a historic building. And it's, looks like a firehouse. So that is some, a bit of a problem for us in some ways. We want to maintain it, but we also want people to know that, that this is a place where the arts happen. And we find more often than not, people still think it's a firehouse and even refer to it as the firehouse. So just wanted that to be part of the discussion as well, that we maybe look at ways that we can improve upon that perception of the use of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth? So sworn and.
First name is Aisha, A Y S E, last name is A K I N C I G I L. I'm not gonna pronounce it. First of all, as one member of the Bering, oh, I also live in Fort Berry. As one member of the Bering City, if we have a non-residential use, I think one of the best things that happened to the area is the art center. I think it brings value, it makes our community stronger. As one member, I am really in favor of keeping the art center and allowing him to grow. The other thing I wanted to ask you is, the nature of the neighborhood. I don't know how much we can do about the trees, but I'm not sure if one fourteen would have happened if they weren't allowed to cut some trees. And that really changes, you know, cutting, cutting an amazing old tree, if it's not necessary, from a public health perspective, really changes the nature of the neighborhood too. So if there's anything that could be done, I know Princeton has some stuff on, on that, but I don't know if it can be even part of the planning board's purview.
Yeah, I could take a look. I don't necessarily know the township's tree ordinance. I, I do know, and Sammy can correct me if I'm wrong, but the NJDEP, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
The state just forced us.
Yes, yep.
We passed a new, new tree ordinance.
So the, the state was requiring municipalities to pass a new tree ordinance? For the whole state, yes, not just, I'm sorry, yeah, it's just West Windsor. And I, that's more of an engineering related thing, but I believe that tree ordinance is a lot more strict than what was previously required by the state.
Hold on, they need to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth? Thank you. Andrew.
Yeah, I do. Right now, we have introduced the new tree ordinance. What the DEP is requiring is that you can still cut down trees or trim trees. You can still cut down trees that are sick or are dangerous trees. But that for healthy trees, then there's a maximum that you can cut down without permission of three trees over a five-year rolling period. However, that doesn't mean that you can't cut the trees down. It means that you have to replace them according to the law. So you either have to replace them on your property with trees that are, that are set by law. If it's, if it's, and this is set by the DEP. If a tree is, it starts with trees that are six inches in diameter. And then if you, then you would have to replace it with a certain size tree. If you go up to another size, you have to replace with bigger tree. And you do have to, and there's how many trees you have to use as a replacement. And then if you have no room to put those trees, you can pay the town to plant trees somewhere else. And, and we're not encouraging that. We would much prefer, based on our pricing, that we would like people to replace their own trees. But the tree ordinance doesn't say you can't cut down a tree. It essentially provides that you have to make replacements somewhere if, if you do. Is, is that pretty much the way everybody remembers that?
And that would apply to residential properties too, right?
Yeah, right now, we do have most of that in our tree ordinance for larger properties. But this is now, what the DEP is, is the main change to our ordinance is that this is now for residential properties also. Yeah, there's going to be a hearing on April 29th, which is our next council meeting on that particular law, if anybody does want to, want to come to the hearing. And the copies of the ordinance are on the website because we introduced them, introduced it at the last meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I, can I ask Andrew one question first? You said that that's on the 29th of April.
The, the DEP wants us to adopt the ordinance by the first of May. So we are, we have been working on this and the Shade Tree Commission, the Shade Tree Commission worked with engineering on this for quite some time. Then it was brought to the council. The council did some work on it. We had Dan Dobomilsky come before the council. We had a, we had some informal discussions on it. And then we had our introduction at the last meeting and we're gonna have the final hearing on the 29th. And that should be the evening that we would attempt to adopt it, yes? It will be adopted. Now, obviously, we still have to vote on it at this point. I think it's, we've talked about it a lot. We've made some modifications to make it a little more consumer friendly. Where, and I believe it doesn't take effect until six months after we pass it in, in order to give time to ever, to inform everybody and to inform the companies that cut trees down that we have this ordinance and what they have to do to comply with it. So that's, that's the scheduling for it now. Okay?
So if I understand correctly, there will be an ordinance that will be, you know, adopted, will allow for replacements within property. So that might not be one solution to protect the nature of the township because one fourteen wouldn't have happened if that tree wasn't allowed to cut.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and please give us your name and spell it.
Dave Kimmel, K I M M E L. I live at 11 Scott Avenue. So, like others have said, thank you for the presentation and starting this discussion. And I agree with many of the comments that people have said. Just had a few additional questions and comments, maybe to clarify, for, for going back to the beginning or the history of things. I feel like the neighborhood probably existed before the zoning. So is there any information that could be provided now or later on? Like how and when the current R1A zoning was put in place? And if we knew what, you know, the conditions are, is there a reason that we put the, the current zoning in place?
That we would have to do some historic research. Cause you're, you're right, that, that district, I think, began development, what we said, nineteen ten, nineteen twenties. Most zoning ordinances did not exist at that time. I don't think the state enabling act happened yet. So we can certainly look to see older files and see what we can find, if we can find something.
Right, it doesn't change the current conditions, but maybe it has some, I don't know, some good historical information that has something there. It's not just good to know. Also, we've been talking about considering different design guidelines. But just to clarify, we're also correctly, correct, talking about changing the bulk standards? Is that right?
Potentially one of the ideas. Those would be the two main ways you would regulate development patterns through bulk criterias as well as through design standards.
Right, so we've been talking about maintaining the character. And at one point, the mayor commented, if you can define what the character is, then that would help. So to the extent that if we are looking at making the zoning match the bulk, the bulk standards, et cetera, or the zoning match the current character, then is that correct? That would prevent huge developments and things that people are concerned about?
One of the steps to stop that, yes. Somebody can always request a variance, but you would at least have design guidelines to better guide people for what you want your development to look like.
Okay, and then following up on the idea of maintaining the character of the neighborhood, which is something I also agree with. I'm interested to potentially request or encourage, you know, there's, like you mentioned, there's some arbitrariness to how the outlines of Bering City are drawn. There's the part on Harris that is not, most of it's in the R1A. But then there was also R20 and we saw the permitted uses and conditional uses. I think part of the character of the neighborhood also is the Crawford Woods, the open space and the currently open space but not preserved Acme Woods, which was mentioned at some point. So even that, even though that was not in the outline of what we saw tonight, I think that that could be part of this study. Like how can, what's the, what are the current permitted uses and conditional uses for that property? Which I think is in the R1C zone. And what's the analysis that we should have about that to make sure that what we see happens there, such as preservation or something else of something else of desired, would be appropriate what people want? So can that be part of the study too? Also, we did see that whole list of permitted uses, conditional uses. Before deleting without much thought everything, I, I think, take a, take a, take a close look at that also. Because some of them may be helpful or useful. I know there aren't any large farms, but it's a permitted use throughout the town. And food security, food production, even on a small scale, is important. So just be careful before we delete things. And then one other question, going back to something else on the agenda. The thing that was, the ERUDC, West Windsor LLC resolution about that drive-through or gas station, whatever, that was postponed to the next meeting. It sounded like they're reviewing a resolution, but I didn't see a resolution on the website. Is that something that's also typically should be made available to the public?
The resolutions are not posted if they're not approved. You could call the office and we can give you a draft one, but the resolutions change right up until the night of the meeting.
So those are typically not on the website?
They're not posted on the agenda, no. Once they're approved, then they're posted.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, so sworn, and please give us your name.
Thank you, William Rutledge, S W I L L I A M, R U T L E D G E. You can call me Burr. I've spoken for many of you. Thank you again for serving, it's really important. Nineteen Scott. Right in the middle of the X, so on Alexander Corner Lot. The, I've spoken with many of you over the years. Thank you very much for everything you do for the community. When we moved here, my wife, you know, like we were a little concerned about how small the house was. But I think she summed it up very quickly. She said, if we were an HGTV community, we would be called Big on Charm, Small on Space. So if we can figure out a way to put that into the regulations, I've got some ideas. If people have combined lots, you know, they're only able to build a single unit that matches the size of what would have been permitted from the smallest of the lots they've combined. If they want to do multiple accessory dwellings and so on, you know, just thinking out loud. Way to prevent, potentially, I don't know, one fourteen Harris, but I'm assuming it's gotta be one of the bigger lots if they were able to build, you know, what was the square footage, three thousand?
Twenty-five hundred, I think.
So, you know, twice as big as my house, but my house is also, I believe, I do own the neighboring lot, seventeen Scott, which I pulled up the records. Could be the smallest lot in West Windsor. Two thousand eighty-two square feet. So my lot is smaller than the house that was built on that, on the neighboring property. At any rate, just thoughts, Big on Charm, Small on Space. Can you go to the, some of the maps? I found them really interesting and I apologize, I hadn't looked at them ahead of time. Conforming use, we already discussed is residential neighborhood, even though there's other uses allowed with some kind of old exceptions, right? So we'd like to maintain that, I would think. Lot size, yeah. Very, very few, maybe one fourteen is the one that's in blue there, I don't know, over on Harris. So, lot frontage, again, none of my, mine will never comply. That's okay. The, if you look at, go to like some of the charts where we saw the average sizes of the lots, I don't know if there's any way to, to work the, the lot size. You know, again, the average is X number of square feet. So even if you own a larger lot, the largest single unit you can use is based on the average of your neighbors. You know, something like that. Again, just to try to keep it small in size, big on charm. There's just a couple of the thoughts I've got. I really appreciate again the opportunity to listen and speak my mind and. And hopefully we have more opportunities. Thank you.
Burr, B E R T or B U?
B U R R.
Okay. Cause I might steal that quote. And if I do, I will credit you on the cover.
Credit my wife, Jennifer.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And please give us your name.
My name is Dunya Salem. D O N I A. My last name is Salem. S A L E M. I live at 8 Scott. I've been a resident of West Windsor for 35 years. I grew up in Windsor Park Estates over by Conover Fields and have been in Barien City since 2016. I'm a single parent. It's just me and my 17 year old. This is one of the only places that I can be, afford to be in West Windsor. My brother's childhood best friend grew up across the street from where, where I live now. So we are a deeply committed family to West Windsor. My father was on the zoning board for many years, Shawki Salem. And my mom is Margot. There we go. Yeah. So just really appreciating everything that's been shared tonight. Also appreciating, um, very much, my child was raised, um, since 2010 in the Arts Council, attending so many camps, so many classes. I am an artist, an interdisciplinary artist myself. It's very crucial. And I think any ways to support its expansion, you know, of course, within staying within the character of the area, everything. I think also the connection, I think the Arts Council can be a really beautiful ambassador for West Windsor in general and for Barien City in general, and carry the spirit of the place too. I think any ways that that can be supported should be like, we can rally behind. How, how wonderful that like great, such life and vitality is infused in the area via the Arts Council. I also think there's a lot of exciting site-specific art projects that can be developed, that can also enhance and highlight some of these more historic areas of West Windsor. Um, and this way, other people, you know, as West Windsor has grown, people that are not connected to the historic significance of particular areas, these are, these are hubs that can actually invite the larger community to come and learn and be connected to the roots of the place in significant ways. I think that's something that we as a community should, can invest in and should invest in. And there's like infinite dynamic possibilities there. Also, uh, I'm an herbalist. I do think, um, having agricultural possibilities, right? Even in terms of like, I grow herbs in my, um, in my home garden, right? And utilize them in working with clients. So that's something that I think should continue. And while discernment should be applied as other people have talked about ways that property can be used, you know, not necessarily like a free for all of that massive list. But thinking about ways, deeply appreciating this point about sustainability and food sovereignty also for residents and particularly like, definitely even, you know, I'm a single income household. It's rough some months for me. So being able to grow my own food is really important too. And having, um, possibilities of, um, generating income that way. There's something else to yeah, just appreciating all that. And also about the Acme Woods and naming that what happens there will significantly affect the flavor in every way of, of Barien City. So just thinking about like this, this, like this, the expansiveness that ripples out. Especially since we know already so many shifts are coming with the development that's happening on the other side of the, of the train station. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Hi. Please raise your hand and, um, I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. What is your name, sir?
Paul Ligeti, P A U L L I G E T I. And I'm at 2 Sleepy Hollow Lane, and I'm admittedly not a Barien City resident, but I'm sure most of you know that I'm the vice president of the Historical Society of West Windsor. For those who don't know what the Historical Society is, we are a nonprofit. We've been around since 1983. And we document and publicize local history. We also have a museum on Southfield Road. I just want to touch on a few points that were said today. One of them, I think by Susan Abbey was this idea of branding Barien City more. And of course, the Historic Society would naturally be in support of this, whether or not it's, sorry, history with a capital H or history with the lower, lowercase h. So anything the planning board can do to promote Barien City as a historic identity. And it's heartening to see how many people are kind of latching onto this and caring about this history here. Of course, the Historic Society would be in support of. Because one of the things that we've seen over the years is especially as the township has expanded so much, right? It's, it's tripled in size in the past, you know, 50 years roughly. Is that fewer and fewer people are recognizing the hit, recognizing the history of the places they moved into. So anything that can be done in terms of branding to help newcomers and even people who currently live here to understand that places like Barien City have unique cultures, have unique histories, have unique architecture, um, and, and obviously lot sizes is a big thing too. Anything, uh, that helps promote that, the Historic Society would support too. Thank you.
Thank you.
The map too, because I stole that from your website.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please give us your name.
Good evening. Tanya Luddy. That's L U D as in Delta, D as in Delta Y. Uh, I reside at 26 Scott Avenue. I'm a newer resident to Barien City, so last three years. Um, but I wanted to have my voice heard and echo some of the sentiments that my neighbors have shared here this evening. So I'll start at the Arts Council. It has been truly amazing for us to take advantage of this building so close to us. I have an 11 year old daughter. She's in the dual immersion program within the town. And for those of you who are not familiar with child psychology, uh, as soon as you expose children to multiple languages at a very early age, the propensity for art increases. So it's been really amazing and beneficial for our family to have a center walking distance from our home. So it would be great to see if we can come to some kind of agreement to keep them in the neighborhood. So I agree with a lot of those sentiments. The second thing I'd also like to echo is the character of the neighborhood. We specifically chose Barien City for the character. Although I present very young, I'm not interested in a McMansion. I detest cookie cutter houses. I don't aspire to live in a McMansion. So I would love for us to keep, um, as many of the residents has shared, uh, the character of the neighborhood. I also want to acknowledge, um, the need when we think about multi-generational families as well as accessory dwelling units. Just wanted to share, right? Many people think about children, uh, but for me, what's front and center is aging parents. Uh, that's something I think about very often. I have a mother-in-law who has Alzheimer's. So perhaps at some point she may need to dwell with us. Also have two parents, I think they're still young, mid seventies, but at some point they most likely will need to move in with us. Um, I would like to not send them to a home. I feel it's my duty. So wanted to echo the sentiments, but I think at the end of the day, right? As we go through these exercises, we can find compromise, right? And if we can all act together. And then the last point that I'd like to also have my voice heard and comment on is the historic with a lowercase h, I believe is what I've heard. I think that's a wonderful idea and the neighborhood has a lot of rich history. So it'd be nice to be recognized with a lowercase h. And, uh, thank you to all of you for serving and thank you for letting me be heard this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Kondo, M A R Y K O N D O. I live at 6 Barien Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
I just wanted to kind of, I shush my neighbor and, um, on the other side, there was just a kind of a clear cutting yesterday. It was, um, it's a new purchase. I invited them here, but they didn't come. They cut down really the six large trees. And so did you see it? Well, I get a lot of light now, but my concern is, and I wanted it on record to how big their house could be. So they have a double lot, which I think, you know, cause mine is a quarter. So it's probably about a half acre. Could they build like a 2,500 square foot house? And would it have to go back because they're side by side? You know, because it's southern light on my side and like, and Harris, I don't know if you consider it when the houses are really close. Our houses are really close. Like when they were talking the five feet clear, side clearance, we're close to that. Like we see everybody's everything. And we try to maintain like but, but in serio, in seriousness, like if they build a two-story house that is 2,800 square feet all the way back, we may never see sun.
So
and, oh, so, and then that would be one without a variance too. So I wouldn't even know it was going up until they start.
Potentially, yes.
Like really next to my house, like, like from me to you is I can see and I call it Art's House because Art, Art Harvey, it is Art Harvey's house. He was there since what the eighties, I think. Yeah. And so, I mean, the new people seem lovely. So I'm not dissing them. I just, you know, I want to be prepared. So if you could tell me, I don't know, could you tell me?
So if there was a half acre lot, that would be 21,780 square feet. The allowable FAR, and I think I misspoke before, so I apologize. I said 17%. It's actually 13%.
Yes.
So the allowable FAR would be 13%.
It would be like 2,800.
Taking that number, you would be looking at 2,800 square feet.
Yeah. That's a really big house because my house is 1,100 square feet. And so that would be like one and a half of my, you know, my house plus one and a half houses. And I see the one on Harris. And I see the bird's eye view of that little tiny house next to that really big house. And that big house is on the east side of that little tiny house with their very, very small side variance. Those people don't get light. And you kind of live in an area, it's a neighborhood, you have yards, you expect some some light, you know, it's not like you're, you're in a more urban setting where there's row houses that are facing, you know, like they don't even have windows on the side. And so it's a concern and I just wanted to put it out there because since there was the clearing, there will be building and I don't know, I don't know, am I able to find out if they've been approved?
I, I vaguely remember that house. Um, I think the gentleman who used to own it passed away recently.
He did not. He just has dementia and they moved him to another place.
Someone else who was handling the estate.
Yes.
The property was sold. A young couple did buy it.
Yep.
And they will be putting addition on that house. It conforms to the zone.
It conforms to the zoning. And can I find out how big it is? So I can prepare myself?
My office will call tomorrow. Give us the address and I'll bring it up for you.
All right. Because, okay. Thank you. That's all.
Are you finished? I guess she's finished. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please give us your name.
It's Isabel Kazdin, I S A B E L. Kazdin, K A S as in Sam, D as in David, I N as in Nancy.
What's your address?
It's 11 Scott Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I just wanted to jump off of what one of our neighbors was just commenting on. To just reemphasize that I think a lot of the conversations tonight have been about design guidelines and thinking about the character of the neighborhood from sort of like an aesthetic point of view. But I think a lot of the comments have been concerns about scale. And so I, I, I think what I'm hearing, and maybe everyone could disagree with me, is that the scale is what really gets people moreover, more so than the aesthetics of what's being constructed or maybe what's being added on to. So I guess I just wanted to emphasize that as you all consider solutions to the non-conformance of what's currently in the neighborhood to what the zoning currently says, that I would be more in favor of taking a hard look at the bulk standards rather than design guidelines, because that feels like a much more of a an instrument that could really objectively address some of these concerns around scale and design guidelines are more subjective. And while we could probably consider both, I think if these bulk standards had been updated or had been written originally to be more in alignment with what the neighborhood actually was like when they were first created, then we wouldn't be in a situation where we would have these larger construction projects that are so out of scale with what is currently in the neighborhood. Because you know, when you're looking at guidelines that are relative to a minimum lot area that simply doesn't exist, even within like orders of magnitude doesn't exist, then that's when you get these larger projects. So just to say that I would be in favor of, of taking a closer look at the bulk standards as we're considering solutions. But then also to say that my husband and I are new, first time homeowners and we purchased in Barien City. And I just wanted to emphasize what some other folks had said, that the importance of neighborhoods with small homes can't be overstated, that it's very difficult to find neighborhoods like this in New Jersey, in this part of New Jersey. And it's so important just for so many reasons, for affordability, for sustainability, like we need to be leaning into homes of this scale more. And it's not a bad thing to encourage people to live. We're all testament to the fact that you can live in small spaces. I think people are afraid of that sometimes. But it is comfortable and doable. It's, and so, so much better for society and the environment for so many reasons. So I, I just think that it's not a bad thing to be encouraging people to be in conformance with that, not only from an aesthetic point of view. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, speak? Please step up. Okay. And there will be multiple. I, I, I'm sorry, I was about to, you stole my thunder. Sorry. I was going to say that it, it people that maybe, um, didn't step up to speak tonight, but they probably heard some of their neighbors, uh, iterate a lot of things that they're feeling, thinking about seeing, um, David's going to take all of this information, all your feedback, the questions the board has asked, he's gonna put it together, come up with some solutions that kind of address a lot of things that you're thinking and have stated here tonight. And there'll be multiple opportunities to come and look at what he's come up with in regards to bulk standards, um, character issues, uh, lot sizes, so on and so forth. And they'll, you'll have more opportunity to, to address that. Did I miss anything, David?
No, like I said, uh, thank you all very much for all the comments. Like I said, I, I can do a zoning analysis, but you all live in Barien City. So you understand that flavor. Did you want to?
Okay, we have a, one more.
Hi. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear?
Bob Branchek, 31 Barien Avenue.
Raise your right hand.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth?
Yeah, I just want. No, name and address, please.
31 Barien Avenue.
And your name again?
Name.
Bob Branchek.
Spell your last name, please.
B R A N C H E K.
Thank you.
I wanted to add that people that might be interested in, uh, or are would have to do a variance in the future, attend the variance meeting other than their own to get an idea what the process is like. Because I've done that and I found it vigorous, but it was very fair, um, experience. So that is very worthwhile. Also, I've lived, um, in Barien City since 1983. The neighborhood is overall better than it was for the entire duration of time, including preserving the character of the neighborhood. So I think the, uh, zoning board has done a very good job over that period of time. That's all.
Thank you. And I, uh, I appreciate your comment on fair, fair variance hearings, because I think we all try to be fair when someone comes before us.
And on the plus side, if you go to a zoning board hearing, you get to listen to me talk again. So that's maybe not a selling point. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sure.
Given some of the concerns of the residents, uh, about current projects, does that influence the timetable for, you know, making these changes and, and decisions? I mean, it sounds like there are some things that are maybe too late, but, uh, I think there are concerns about future possibilities. So how does that affect the timetable of this work?
It's a good question. Um, so on the one hand, we don't have any time limitation statutorily, right?
So on the one hand, we don't have any time limitations statutorily, right? So we can take our time and kind of vet this through, but while we take our time and vet this through, zoning board applications can still be submitted for, or applications for something that might not necessarily fit the character. So it is a balancing act, right? On the one hand, we don't want to rush things, we want to make sure that we're covering all our bases and really vetting ideas out, but at the same time, we do want to make forward progress. So that way, those concerns that have been expressed tonight won't necessarily manifest in the near future. So that's a very long-winded, long-winded way of saying, I don't know the answer necessarily. We don't want to drag our feet, but we don't want to go too quickly. So it's gonna be a balancing act, so I don't know the answer to that. It'll depend a lot on what you guys think and what the board thinks as well. But it's certainly something to keep in mind.
She meant how, and correct me if I'm wrong, she meant new things that have been built that are conforming, but people feel are too big.
Exactly, yes, exactly, I think that's, yeah, yeah. There's nothing stopping that right now, so.
Nothing you can do.
Yeah.
Just quickly, I think the fact that we heard from so many people about 114, excuse me, Harris, I think that's indicative of how not having any guidelines in writing about what something should look like and the standards it should meet, if it otherwise conforms, there will be no review, there will be no say. And I think you could see how upset people were about what, what went there. They have a very big lot, which we have, double and triple lots. They had one of the big ones, they didn't need a variance, so they could do whatever they wanted.
Okay. Okay.
David, do you have any closing words?
No, just again, thank you very much, I appreciate everybody's comments. I know this is, you know, later than most people stay out, usually on a Wednesday night, so I appreciate you coming out and speaking with. This is, I mean, not, that's not necessarily for you guys. So we're gonna take these ideas, we're gonna play around with it, we're gonna take your considerations and thoughts and begin to formulate ideas for how we can kind of correct some of these concerns and inconsistencies. So as we put up those ideas, I'll just reiterate this again, there might be ideas that I come up with that you all on the board absolutely hate, and that's part of the process, so we vet that out, we discuss it, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right, but maintaining this dialogue is the important part of the process. So again, I want to thank everybody, you've been very helpful, provided us with a lot of information and gave me a lot to think about. So I'll begin dissecting this and coming up with some ideas for how we can incorporate this into a plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If my sign will in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Hey, I remember to close the public hearing, I'm making progress.
Make a move, make a move, sir.